I'm gonna call a regular scheduled July council meeting order. I wanna welcome all of our citizens, visitors, and everyone that has joined us via our live stream. We'll open our normal fashion with our prayer followed by a pledge. I ask Mr. Woods if he will lead us in prayer.
Our Father, our God, again, we thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to come together again. The Master, we pray for your wisdom, we pray for your knowledge, we pray for understanding. The Master, the business tonight, that we not look at self, but what would be better for the citizen of Bolivar. God, we just pray now that you bless the sick, bless the older master that stands in need of prayer. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call of the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Lyle.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
We have, we got three sets of minutes to approve. If there's not any changes or corrections, if not any problems with that, can we take the approval of all three of those minutes at one time? We have the minutes from the regular scheduled June council meeting, the special call June meeting to pass the budget, and the special call July first meeting to swear on our new council members. Are there any corrections to those minutes, changes? Or is there a motion to approve all three of those minutes?
I approve.
All right, have a motion by Ms. Miller, there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, all in fact, well, I'm sorry, uh, cash your votes. They have turned the screens, I can't see them.
That's just probably.
All right, motion, motion care. Under my report, first thing, governor's conference will be September eighteenth through the nineteenth. If you guys, I, did you give them that in the packets? I don't know if y'all, okay. You should have the information for that in your packet. If you would like to attend, please get with, um, Ms. Carey Beth as soon as you possibly can, cause those, um, that registration will fill up pretty quick. So, that's September the eighteenth and the nineteenth in Chattanooga's governor's conference on ECD. Um, second, I did have a couple of council people reach out to me about, um, wanting to re, I say reevaluate, but discuss the fireworks, um, that we've been dealing with throughout the Fourth of July weekend and stuff like that. Uh, so what I ask, what I'm gonna do is let you guys know, we'll probably have a special meeting next month, uh, to discuss fireworks. Uh, we don't, we don't necessarily have to have a decision now, uh, but that'll give us time to have a meeting and get together and just talk about the pros and the cons of all of it. So, just wanted to let y'all know. Um, I know I've talked to Council McKenna, a couple others about this, so we'll probably look at doing that next month. Um, see, Camp Bolivar starts next week, so if you know any youth or citizens, or if y'all know any of the kids that wants to come, it's for middle school kids, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, going into the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Uh, so week camp starts the next Monday, I don't know the date, but starts next Monday, um, whatever that, no, not Monday, sorry, Tuesday. Starts next Tuesday, so if you know any kids, it's free registration, uh, like make it difficult for us to turn away some kids if we have to, but if they, if they sign up, we'll figure out what to get them involved. It's a week long camp, and that'll start next Monday. So, you have until, uh, Friday to turn in your, your applications for that, so help us get the word out for Camp Bolivar. Um, also let y'all know that we, the House Bill zero zero two three was passed, and we already have public comment sections on our, on our council minute, in our council meeting, but that law was passed, so now if all our meetings, we have to allow for public comment, and also have to have the agendas posted online forty-eight hours before the meeting. So, we, we do that on our city website and stuff now, so, but just let y'all know, if anybody asks you about it, that we already had that in place, and we'll continue to make sure that we, uh, always have the section for, um, public comments in our meetings. Uh, that concludes, oh, one more thing, this gentleman did not want to be recognized, I don't even know his name, but, uh, Chief Jones brought, brought him to my attention. He, that was an event that they had in town. A garbage bag of trash was, uh, thrown all over the lake, uh, this was about a month ago. Uh, this gentleman, like I said, he did not want to be recognized, didn't want to be known, but he came out and cleaned the tile lake up, all the trash litter, picked it up, uh, in the rain, I think, and Chief asked to recognize him, just tell him thank you for helping, help keeping the community clean, but he didn't, he said he just wanted to do it, uh, out of kindness, out of heart, so, um, I, like I said, I don't even know the gentleman's name. Chief Jones wouldn't tell me, so, um, but just say thank him, he knows who he is, and I just appreciate citizens like that, that, you know, take the time to make sure our community and our parks and all that area is clean, so.
Good.
Say good job to him. Uh, moving on to the standing committed reports, under the electric department report, we have the bill, uh, board met on June twentieth, approved a pension plan investment policy, passed a public comment policy, awarded three-year right-of-way contract to volunteer vegetation, increased connection fees to the following, uh, existing service thirty dollars, non-paid reconnection thirty dollars, service crew eighty dollars. Fiber, fiber is now complete in the following, Bolivar, Toon, Cloverport, Soliton, Wyville, Hornsby, Powell, Chappa area, and Hebron area, including Grand Valley Lakes, currently have seventeen hundred customers, up to thirty percent take rate. BA would like to thank the citizens for all of his support for his project, so, uh, the fiber project is going good, and just continue to commend all in his team on that. Uh, next, we have the utility department report, Mr. Nux.
Good evening, council, Mayor. The utility board met, uh, last Wednesday, July fifth, and, uh, we had discussed a gas petition that was submitted, uh, for extending their two-inch gas line, and that's out of the New Hope, uh, road area off of Lisbon Road, it's Smalley Road. It's, uh, about two miles of extension, and it's, uh, about twenty-two houses, so we require ten houses per mile to be feasible. And the other discussion we had was some engineer rates, uh, for our utility department, it's kinda like everybody else is retiring, and we're gonna go with the firm to, uh, do our CDBG grants and, and our ARP grants, we have to have an engineering firm. We're gonna keep discussing that next month's meeting. The gas prices for July were sixty-five cents, which is another good price, so hopefully they'll stay that way this winter, probably not, but that's all I have in my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nux. Uh, fire chief price, why chief is coming, I forgot to mention this on the report. Also in that law, it required that we update our robber rules of order, uh, in our way we function in our meetings, so we, everybody has a copy of that here, that's what that's for. Go ahead, chief, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Uh, my report, uh, fire call, we had a total of twenty-nine fire calls, had twenty in the city, uh, nine in the county. Um, training hour was two forty, smoke alarm install was twelve, fire code inspection twenty-one, purification one. Um, still, just keep, let you guys know, we still in the process of looking for the brush truck, um, y'all have approved us to go ahead and get one, but we still in the process of looking for one, just, when we, looking for one, just, price is up there, so we still wanna make sure we get the best for the city, so we still looking for one. Okay, this is my report.
Thank you, chief. Next, police, uh, Chief Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Woo, excuse me, my report is as follows, we've had two hundred and seven hundred and thirty-five calls for service, three hundred and sixty-five citations issued, thirteen accidents, five of them with injury, eight with property damage, twenty-six arrests, two with juveniles, twenty-four adults, and we've had two hundred and one training hours. concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Chief Jones. Next, parks and rep. Oh, I forgot, Ant's on vacation this week, so you got his report, uh, if y'all have any questions on that, let me know, and I'll give that, all that. Uh, streets and sanitation, Mr. Vonder.
Good afternoon. Uh, July is bulky item, pick up months, and, uh, still working on neighborhood hub, but we about through with that, and we picked up four hundred and twenty-five tons of garbage in the city this month for month of June, and we got our asphalt done on our streets this past month also.
Thank you, Mr. Vonder, you had a lot of very compliance and zoning, Mr. Watkins.
Good evening, Mayor, council, welcome new council members. Uh, you have my report, probably, building consult, consultations, five, building permits written, two, building inspections, three, plumbing inspections, one, mechanical inspections, one, courtesy notices issued, twenty-five, had several letters mailed, different things, um, just a note you might be interested in. Uh, the Jack's building, we're scheduled to do a final inspection on it Thursday, and they're scheduled to turn it over to Jack's on Friday, and maybe be cooking some chicken and hamburgers by next week, we hope, so that's kinda where we are on it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, whether there was not a planning commission meeting, EMS, um, Saint Kevin, I seen Joyce, I seen Bobby, they got the whole crew, so, Kevin, you coming?
I'm getting there slow today, and I'm on my way.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, council, um, the, uh, report for June for EMS, we had two hundred and thirty-seven total responses. Uh, a hundred and seven of those were emergent, and a hundred and thirty were non-emergency. Uh, we transported a hundred and ninety-one patients total during that timeframe. Uh, transfers out of Bolivar General, um, were thirty-nine, and thirty-seven of those went to Jackson, uh, two went to the, a hospital in the Memphis market. Uh, we made a hundred and eighty-seven scene calls inside the city limits of Bolivar, uh, we made twelve scene calls in Hardeman County during the month of June. Um, from those scenes, we transported forty-seven of those patients, uh, directly to Bolivar General. Uh, thirty-eight of those went direct to Jackson General, and four went direct to the Memphis market. And during the month of June, we brought in ten, uh, other med center ambulances from other areas, mainly Madison, to make transports as well. Typically, those are gonna be our transfers out of the ER when we have multiple hold in at one time, in order for those patients not to have to wait an extended amount of time, so that concludes my report for June.
All right, thank you, Mr. Okay, next, uh, tourism and community development, Mr. Heath.
Good evening, council, um, few things that we completed this past month, uh, completed the TCD training for, uh, industrial marketing and attraction in Chattanooga. This will fulfill half of the credits that, uh, I'm receiving for full certification in economic development. Uh, attended the tourism roadmap meeting here, um, with Commissioner Marcus L., uh, and talked about some things, opened some doors for us, and, and gave us some ideas on what we can do, uh, to better tourism in Hardeman County, uh, and then specifically Bolivar. Uh, attended the Build a Better Bolivar meeting with, uh, Mr. Joe Van Dyke and Commissioner Bethany Miller, Mayor Matt Tisick, and I'm very excited about the route that that committee is going in, and the things that they're bringing to the youth of Hardeman County, Bolivar, and then opening it up, this past meeting, we talked about opening it up past just the youth of Bolivar, so I'm excited about that. And then we had the red, white, and Bolivar, um, where we debuted our train that will be taking part in the Christmas celebration. So, it was, I could've went till midnight running the train and probably not gotten all the kids, so they're very excited, and I'm excited about what they're gonna see, uh, at Christmas. And lastly, we're working on some family activities to put in with the barbecue blowout.
Hi, Ms. Phil. Just wanna let you know, a lot of people probably don't know what it takes to put together the red, white, and Bolivar event. Um, I saw the sanitation people out there, they were bush hogging, putting in poles, setting up for traffic, uh, it's a huge event. Um, everyone's still talking about it, we really, really appreciate all that, uh, all that y'all put into it.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, uh, the team of the city of Bolivar, I just, I mean, I'm not gonna take any credit at all other than being the train conductor, I did do that for the full-time, but the team of the city of Bolivar, with Mayor Matt Tisick at the helm, and all that Carrie Beth does, they do a fantastic job, so thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
All right, that concludes standing committed reports, we don't have anything on the old business, uh, under new business, have board appointments. Um, I'll go over all these, and if y'all okay with appointing all of them at one time we can, or for some reason y'all wanna go one by one, we will. Uh, the board appointments for Bolivar Energy Authority, uh, Dr. Frank Willhite, he's has served one term, and asking that we reappoint him. Uh, on the planning commission, Jody Jackson, Stephen Brooks, and Latoya Toit, La Toya Todd, sorry. Uh, be asking to reappoint those, uh, individuals on the historic zoning commission, uh, Commissioner Brad Grantham. On the utility board, uh, Mr. Randy Hill, industrial board, Debbie Moore, James Six, Richard Tutner. Recreation board, uh, Coach James Berkeley, their board, um, is Lois Hama. So, those are the appointments that I'm presenting to you guys for support to, uh, appoint to those terms on the boards. Any questions on those? Is there a motion that we approve the board appointments? Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Lyles, it, all right, if you will cash your votes. All right, motion care. Next, I'll have discussion of construction manager at risk, what this is, um, we have, if y'all remember, we did the, we're starting the process on getting prices and bids on, well, not bids, getting prices and concepts for our sportsplex with the multipurpose sports facility, uh, with YFCA, as well as remodeling this facility here, and we're doing that through a communit- communities facility program, and that's gonna be through USDA. So, we have two ways, normally what we usually do in the past, we just do, uh, get the cost, and we'll do a close, a seal bid with construction, uh, companies, and, and what has happened in the past, especially with construction going like it is now, it's always over budget, then we have to start the process all over again, redesign it, re-engineer, then turn around and hope that the bids come back on the budget, and we just do that over and over again. USDA allows for us to do what's called a construction manager at risk, well, we'll take the construction manager that worked with the engineers on the front end, and whatever our budget is for that project, they can, they control that cost and keep that budget, keep that project within budget. Um, so we have to send out requests for proposals, and we do that through, uh, website, through, uh, newspapers, and then also the engineering firm will send it out through their websites and newspapers and all, you know, across the state or whatever. We had, we had three comeback, and the two that I would like to use, and the two, when I say two, we would use one construction manager on the sportsplex, uh, facility, and then we would have another construction manager on the renovations that we would do to the city hall here. The three that came with proposals were, uh, Montgomery Martin, Chris Woods Construction, and Henson, Henson Construction. I'm not really familiar with, with Henson Construction, um, I, they sent a proposal, that's all the thing I know about the company, uh, what they sent in. Uh, I'm asking the council to take my recommendations to use my Montgomery Martin on the sportsplex. Some of the, I made a list of some of the people they've done work with, Montgomery Martin, um, Auto Zone Park, Briarcrest High School, Tom Lee Park, uh, Liberty Bowl in Memphis, they've done in the engineering and construction, sorry, the construction on those, and it's a lot more in here that they've done. Chris Woods Construction has, uh, done projects at Greenville High School, Lakeland High School, TBDN in Jackson, uh, the main event, Gold Strike Casino, Tunica, those are some of the projects they've built. So, I'm asking that we accept Chris Woods Construction to do the remodel, uh, to be the construction manager at risk for the, the city hall remodel. So, though, the, and the cost is four percent, though, the cost of these is what's included in the USDA loan, so their cost is already, whenever we get our loan or funding, it'll be included in it. So, any questions on those, or anything?
Have any grants been applied?
Uh, no, we're, what we're working on right now is the, what's called the preliminary architecture report to see what it's gonna cost, and then once we do that, we are not committing to any money yet, so once we do that, once we get that number, then we'll come back to this board and say, hey, we got to come up with X number of dollars, and this is what it's gonna cost us with the, the, uh, the financials of all of that. All right, any other questions? Is there a motion to take my recommendations for Montgomery Martin to do the sportsplex and the multipurpose sports facility, and Chris Woods Construction to do the, um, construction manager at risk for the remodel of city hall? Don't move. Motion by Mr. Golden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams, if you would, cash your votes. All right, motion care. I've got too many papers up here. What's next on that? I thought so, discussion of EMS, okay, here it is, got too many papers up here. All right, so, um, I'm gonna pass these around here, let's see, so you guys pretty much know where we are with EMS. Uh, we talked about this at our May council meeting, maybe? Um, everybody give one, at our May council meeting, and I basically, I told y'all that we, we go into the county to talk about, to basically see what they're, what they, what they were gonna do, um, and they, West Tennessee Healthcare reached out to us and basically said that they would have to renegotiate our contract, and they would get what it's on, what that would cost. Uh, Kevin did send me a proposal back, uh, for us to keep our, for us to keep EMS service in the city of Bolivar. The total subsidy amount requested was four hundred and six thousand, three seventy-five. Uh, they're also prepared to take a monthly payment of three, thirty-three thousand, eight sixty-four, um, to extend the service, for, to extend the service to provide time for a decision to be made, basically with the county. Um, I've tossed and turned over this a long time, and I had many sleepless ni- sleepless nights when it comes to this EMS issue, and Kevin is here, and well, a lot of their team is here, and they can answer any questions and what y'all may have. Uh, I've went to the county commission, I've went to county commission meeting, I went to the county EMS meeting. Uh, at this time, I don't know what actions they're gonna take, county EMS is a responsi- sorry, EMS services are a responsibility of the county. Um, and y'all know we took this on because of the situation that the county was in a couple of years ago. Um, I'll just be frank, I'll be the first to tell you, four hundred thousand dollars is not in our budget to pay for EMS for the city. Um, like I said, it ain't our, it's not our responsibility, it's a responsibility that falls on the county. And I'll also tell you that it scares the crap out of me to know what happens if West Tennessee Healthcare leaves, uh, Bolivar. Um, I don't know how long they'll stay, if we decide to vote this down or vote this, I don't, I, like I said, Kevin is here. They have been more than gracious to us, and I can't tell y'all enough, personally, as the mayor, I appreciate what y'all have done for Bolivar and Hardeman County the last few, uh, months through this discussion. There's been a lot of negative things said about y'all, and I'll please, I'm begging you to accept this apology on my behalf, cause y'all done saved a whole lot of people in this community, and the treatment that y'all getting, you don't deserve. Um, so I've stood up before the commission, they blame the city for us being in this situation, by no means is this the city fault. Uh, we did what we need to do to take care of citizens of Bolivar, but at this point, a half million dollars in our budget to pay for a county problem is just, where, when we do it here, you know, where does it stop? Um, but what that, what that means for our community is, right now, the county runs, I think, two units, and I know that y'all run two, probably three a lot of times. The moment that they leave this county, I have two ambulances running, now they'll say that they're, they're in the process of saying that they're gonna add more. I don't know how long that's gonna take, I know they have been short for months, if not years, and I don't know how that's gonna change in six months, or six weeks, or a day for that matter, but it's, it's, it's gonna be a bad situation, and that's not a threat, that's just telling you how it is, so. Um, I don't have a vote, this is the decision of the eight people up here sitting with me, so I'll open the floor if there's any questions or discussion on it. Uh, what I can't answer, Kevin is here, and I think he can be able to answer on behalf of West Tennessee Healthcare, but hate to be the bearer of bad news, but this is where we at.
Mr. Mayor, so the contract was up when with West Tennessee Health?
June thirtieth.
Okay, so between that time and whatever time that we stop using them, will we be responsible for this thirty-three thousand a month? Or are they just staying in good faith until we can hopefully get a resolution to this issue?
That would be a Kevin question, and I can't speak to them.
Yeah.
Come, yeah, I'm sorry, come on up, Kevin.
Y'all, I may fall down, I've got enough guys in the back here to help me. Um, so, we have not, uh, received any, any funds, um, since the end of June to remain. Um, we, we expressed, uh, to the mayor that, um, it was not our intention to leave, um, Bolivar in a, in a bad predicament, um, that we have, we have stayed and provide, provided above the level of service to which we're contracted for since the day we showed up in, in January first, two thousand twenty-two. Um, we're currently contracted, or were contracted up until the end of June for one and a half ambulances, and we've covered two, around the clock, ALS level with a paramedic on every truck, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, since January first, two thousand twenty-two. Um, now, we did give a monthly amount to the mayor because we knew this was, this was happening, that these negotiations were happening between the city and the county, a- and we did not want to just leave, because we understand what the call volume is here, right? And I can tell you that two units is gonna be problematic for that call volume for the entire county and the city. So, um, you know, we, we demonstrate here every month that we're bringing in extra resources. I mean, Hardeman County is helping us with some of the, the call volume, we're helping Hardeman County with some of their call volume. So, when they run out of trucks, they call us, that's where you see where we're doing ten in the county. I think they reported seven or eight or nine that they did in the city. So, at the end of the day, I mean, the compet- healthy competition is good, but when you got a life on the line, we're gonna call help when, when we need it. Um, every ambulance service, I thought, you know, Ms. Joyce did a great job when she gave her presentation, uh, explaining the situation of EMS in the state of Tennessee right now, it's bad, you know, staffing is bad, financials are even worse, you know, for every county. Um, EMS is a volume-driven service, so, you know, while we do better in Madison County financially, it's because we have a hospital over there that has fifty, you know, patients discharging by ambulance every single day, and eight or ten dialysis patients that you're taking repetitively, you know, every day to their dialysis treatments, and that translates into, um, you know, a financial performance. So, we don't have those type of things in, in rural Tennessee, so every service in the state is in the same boat that, that we're looking at. Um, I can tell you that, you know, even Hardeman County, they were short-staffed before we got here, you saw the result of that. Um, during COVID, everybody was beat up. I can tell you, in, in the year twenty twenty-one, before we even had a contractor came here, uh, you know, to set up shop, we transported almost two hundred patients out of this county in two thousand twenty-one. And we, from Jackson, brought units from Jackson, uh, to take them, you know, out of the hospital, or, um, cancer treatments, or, you know, any of those types of things, so, um, and a lot of times, those were things that we potentially lost money on. We called units in on overtime to take care of patients in areas that we did not have contracts in. So, you know, those are some in-the-weeds things, you know, things about how we function, and, and where our, you know, uh, heart and soul is as it relates to taking care of patients, and that's where we're always gonna keep it, okay? So, um, any questions related to the, the financials, or where we came to the numbers, or any of those types of questions, I'll be happy to answer. Yes, ma'am.
I, I think that, uh, one of the issues that, that the county has is, I, just from what I've been told, is there wa- there was some concern about, uh, if this was gonna be the cost that, say, I guess it was gonna be eight hundred thousand is the.
That was for the entire county?
For the whole county.
Yes, ma'am.
And if, how would they know, uh, how to predict, is that gonna go up, is it gonna be one point two next year? Is there any kind of guarantee that you all could give the county to let them know that there's gonna be a cap on that?
And so, um, all I know to do is to be as honest as I can. And so, um, all I know to do is to be as honest as I can about that. No one, because I, I'm, I'm going to actually answer that question with another question if I could, because I think it'll tie it together. The question's also been asked, you know, you're, you came in Bolivar for nothing, for zero amount, now you're coming back asking for four hundred and, you know, four hundred thousand dollars. So, if you knew that, why didn't you come in for free? Well, back in those days, we were everywhere for free, the only difference was Benton County and they weren't, they're paying a subsidy, but it's for an extra, extra unit. Their call volume calls for two units, the county wanted a third unit, so that's what they're paying the cost for. You know, every other county we're in, we're doing it without subsidy, without any type of, of, uh, you know, supplemental funding from anybody. And so, we have taken that hit year after year financially because it was relatively small compared to the big picture. That is no longer the case, and healthcare in general, uh, financials and healthcare are, again, uh, look a lot worse than they did two or three years ago. Nobody could have proven, you know, could have, um, uh, predicted COVID. You know, no one could have predicted that, you know, the average EMS turnover across the nation would be mid-twenty, twenty-five to thirty-five percent every year. You know, that salaries would have had to have gone where they've gone, um, that schools would not be turning out EMS, uh, workers like they used to. You know, when I graduated paramedic school back in the, back in the nineties, worked here in Hardeman County, you know, we had thirty-two students in our class, you know, there's been classes recently at local community colleges that have only graduated four, five, six, seven, you know, um, paramedics in a year's time. And there's one year that they didn't even have a program. You know, so, that's translated into a shortage in the industry. A lot of things that we just could not predict, we couldn't predict that there would be a seventy percent increase in fuel, that we would have upwards of two hundred and fifty percent increase in our supply cost. And Medicare and other insurers, they don't give us any offset for that, you know, um. I can tell you, because we did share this with, with the mayor's approval, we did share this with the county to give them an idea of what we were looking at at the, in the city of Bolivar. In the city of Bolivar, um, twenty-nine percent of our, our patients are Medicare, primary insurance is Medicare. They pay us an average of five hundred and five dollars a transport. Thirty percent Medicare Advantage, that number drops to four twenty-two. Twenty percent is Ten Care and that drops to three sixty-eight. And then nine percent, uh, self-pay, so if a patient is responsible for those bills, we see an average of forty-two dollars. The cost, if you take all of the transports that we make in Bolivar divided, divided out by our expenses, the cost is six hundred and thirty dollars an ambulance transport. So, I went back and looked at, at the last twelve months of where we stood at, um, June thirtieth and we're four hundred and four thousand dollars in the red, right now, as we speak. So, you know, we anticipate, um, increase is coming, you know, I mean, our guys deserve a raise. Fuel is probably going to go up, you know, who knows what the next pandemic is. So to answer your question more directly, we don't know. I mean, we want to have a good faith understanding. I can tell you that we've charged zero subsidy in all the counties like I explained earlier. I can tell you that in Benton County in one year, we actually gave subsidy dollars back because we saw that we did not need the subsidy that we asked for the year before, so we decreased their subsidy by seventy or eighty thousand dollars the next year. So, I hope that goes to kind of debunk some of the, you know, things swirling around out there that, you know, that we're, we don't have the best intentions. You know, I've heard about locality and keep it local. We've got a local hospital that's been here since nineteen ninety-five, right? The majority of our full-time employees are Hardeman County residents, so we are local, in my opinion. You know, but to answer your question, we don't know, um, it would not be our intent to have any type of, um, profit margin built into that. There's no profit margin built into this number here that we've given the mayor. Um, as a matter of fact, I can tell you that it's actually lower than what we actually have to have.
So this is close to a break-even number for you?
Yes, sir, that is my, that is our mission financially speaking, um, on the financial front is to break even. Um, I can tell you that, I don't want to speak for Joyce, but, um, I can speak for myself. As long as I'm here, we're going to put the patient in the center of the table, we're going to make our decisions based on the patient. Okay, and I, I think I speak for her too when I say that, but that's, that's where we are, um. Got a group of folks in the back of the room here that are, that are representing our service and I can tell you, e- any single one of them takes care of you, they're going to have your interest at the very center of the table. Because they, they, first of all, they, they believe that, second of all, they know that's what our expectation is. And that's what Ricky Kirby's expectation is. And Tim Adams and James Ross. So we're all living by that standard and we will continue to. You know, another, um, item I'll bring up, if you want to go to Memphis and you're stable enough to transport to Memphis, that's where we'll take you. You want to go to Jackson General, that's where we're going to take you. We're going to take you where you want to go and follow the letter of, of the law and the regulations for those, so. Um, I will, one little caveat I didn't add, um, many times in our contracts that are beyond two years long, um, we can put an escalator, a defined escalator in those contracts and I think that's, um, industry standard for that is one, two percent, you know, in that neighborhood. So if you, if you were looking at doing like a three-year contract, a three or four-year contract, we could build, build that, um, escalator in there. That conversation is a little bit over my pay grade, so I would need to, to put it, um, put that conversation in, on the table where it belongs, but that's typically what our longer-term contracts do, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Kevin?
I just wanted to take time to tell you and your crew, just on, yesterday, uh, had a niece. If your crew hadn't have made it, she never would have woke up, she would have died. Uh, they, they, they stayed with her all the way through until she was okay. And I just wanted to just tell you, thank you.
We, we hope she's doing okay.
She's doing better, so much better.
Um, my stance, I've shared with the commissioner, shared with the, uh, county EMS. Citizen, Bolivar, the city of Bolivar is in Hardeman County and the hard- the citizens of Bolivar pay Hardeman County taxes, just like every other citizen. Uh, the Hardeman County EMS expense line for what the budget they pass was a million one. Um, the, I'm sorry, million, the revenue was a million one. Their expenses are a million eight. Right now in the county's EMS, where it's currently set up, they, they plan to lose seven hundred thousand. Uh, they asked the county for eight hundred thousand dollar subsidy. So, if the county came up with over a hundred thousand dollars, we would potentially be sitting with four units in this county opposed to the two that we would have without them being here in the city. Uh, I've been real public about my stance on it, so, um, and we've been, Kevin and Joyce, we've all talked and they have been treated like the outsiders, but you see guys back there that used to work for the county EMS, that's working for West Tennessee Healthcare now. Um, previous employees, directors, and they've been providing good service and, you know, so they ain't the out-of-town guys that you, and I think it's close to ten or twelve that actually live in Hardeman County that work for them, just on the EMS side. Uh, so like you said, they're not the out-of-town bunch that people say. Mr. uh, wait, go ahead.
Uh, so, another question's been raised, we've all heard it, uh, why, why does Hardeman County need three or four ambulances? Uh, it's been said a few years ago, there was only two and we did just five. Can you just explain, I, I understand why, can you just explain for the average person that doesn't understand transfers and, and the amount of time it takes?
Certainly.
You know, just explain what the need is.
So, uh, the question, and, and you're right, we've gotten that question, I've, I was not able to make the meeting, um, do this injury here, but I, I, I did hear that question come up. We've always run three, why do we need four, right? So, I came to work here in nineteen ninety-three for Hardeman County Ambulance Service, we had three trucks. We ran three trucks around the clock. And it, I can tell you that there's, I can't believe that there's any scenario where there's been not enough growth. I mean, we're averaging anywhere from two to seven percent growth a year in every county we're in. I can't imagine over a span of thirty years that we haven't reached that point. Um, as evidenced by twenty twenty-one, when we made two hundred calls, almost two hundred calls in Hardeman County due to call volume. Um, we look at response times, we look at, uh, what we call unit hour utilization. That is the amount of time and it's a metric, we can pull that out of our system that shows how, how much out of a twenty-four hour timeframe was an ambulance not in their service area available to make an emergency call? And we can measure that, and once it gets up to a certain percentage, that tells us if it goes any higher, we're going to be seeing increased response times, which are not good. We're going to be seeing increased delay times to get patient trans- patient transfers from the hospital to higher levels of care. Uh, we're going to see burnout amongst the staff, we're going to see in, uh, increased turnover. So there's industry-specific metrics that we look at like that and actually, we look at them very closely and a lot of times, that's what we use at the hospital to, to justify that, you know, we need to to, to apply some, some salary attention over here or we need to do some, some things over there. We use these industry numbers to drive us into those, into those areas and that's what we see here. Um, if you divide it out, um, we don't know what the exact run num- run numbers are over for the county. We have a good estimate, but we don't have specific data. So, um, with the data we were provided, it shows that we really need four trucks to keep the standard as it is now. I mean, we could look at doing three to three and a half trucks, uh, there just has to be a caveat to that, that, you know, if we see response times going where we think they're going to go, that we would have to come back and address it. I mean, what we don't want to do, regardless of where we operate, and I want to make this really clear, is to be substandard. We cannot provide a substandard service to the people we serve. We just can't, you know, and we, we, there's a certain point that I think you get to that a, a red flag has to go up to say it's not enough. You know, the mayor's right, there is a, there is a law in effect that says that EMS is an essential service and it has to be, it's a county responsibility to provide that service. What it does not say is how many of those services have to be provided. You could put one ambulance in this county and you've met the letter of the law.
What's the value of a life? Other day, I got a call out in the county, there was a gentleman that had a heart attack. I'm the county officer there and he was hurting, he was sweating and I mean, he was actually having a heart attack. We got on radio several time and asked, what's the e- what's the estimated time of this ambulance getting here? This man need to get to the hospital. Guess what, they couldn't really get an answer. So it was an ambulance that come through a little bit earlier, but he went to another destination. But I was in the house with this gentleman for over forty-five minutes. He kept telling me, I can't breathe. I'd, so, please, somebody help me, he kept begging. I'm an officer, I'm not, you know, I'm not trained to do your job. So what as an officer that we can do, we can't put him in the car and take him to the hospital. You know, it's different once you are there on the scene and you actually see what's going on. When the ambulance finally got there, guess what, first thing I done, I said, thank God. Man was still alive, it, did he make it, I don't know, they had to call up air wings in to pick him up, so.
Well, I, I mean, I can, I can tell you that that same scenario plays out all over, you know, rural Tennessee every single day. You know, and it, it becomes about resources, you know, and what resources you have to, to bring to bear when you have things to happen, COVID is probably the primary example of that. I mean, there was times that we had over twenty employees out with COVID, twenty employees. We still maintained, we still kept our standards, we still did what we had to do in order to put that ambulance in your driveway. And that's what we're going to continue to do no matter where we are. You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's what we live by, that's what we're going to do. Now, that being said, uh, I, I don't want to disparage Hardeman County, they're doing the best they can, they've got the same, you know, they've got the same issues with staffing and everything that everybody else does. Um, but I can tell you that, you know, as far as what, uh, opportunities that we have with our services, we, we had the opportunity to put together ambulances on the fly and in a hurry and pull them from other areas. I mean, we can put together two or three ambulances just out of the, you know, office personnel, you know, thirty percent of our non-clinical positions at our service, billing, um, dispatch, uh, have got EMS licenses. You know, I mean, we can put together two or three ambulances like that from Jackson if we need to, to start filling in holes. I mean, those are some of the things that we've always done. Um, one of the questions was about, you know, turnaround, you know, uh, at the ER. In, in the state, we have seen the amount of time it takes to hand a patient over in the ER. I've reported on this, to this council before, uh, when we gave the twenty twenty-two year in review. And, um, you know, there are some hospitals in this region that people are waiting eight hours. You know, to get a hospital bed, ambulance is out for eight hours, waiting to hand the patient off in some hospitals. Fortunately, um, Bolivar General is at the top of the list of the quickest turnaround times. The second hospital, second or third, I believe it was, is Jackson General. We have a methodology in place that we're bringing in people to sit with patients so those ambulances can get turned back around and get back into their county where they belong to take care of folks. So, that's, you know.
So, I, I, so let me understand this, you, you mentioned that in the budget for the county, they had a certain amount. And are you saying so in addition to what they have already budgeted, they would still need to pay an additional eight hundred thousand or instead of what they?
Oh, yeah, instead of what they budgeted, eliminate that.
So they would save money to go with, with Tennessee Healthcare, okay, so, I, thank you.
The county, yes.
So, thank you.
Um, and I want to make it known and I'm gonna probably do a whole lot of advertising in the paper, on the radio and let people understand, this board, and I'm telling y'all, and I know a lot of y'all have been told me when I went to the county commission, the actions of this board here is, we shouldn't even be talking about EMS. Like this shouldn't even be brought up on our agenda, this is, this is the, like I told the commissioner, this is the equivalent of our roads talking about paving our forty, this is a county issue that we stepped up when West Tennessee Healthcare came and gave us an opportunity to help, they came and helped, we took that opportunity and I refuse to let the commissioners make any of us on this board feel bad for bringing them in here to provide service to our citizens for free of charge. Um, so like, I want it to be known that the way this room is filled up, I really want this room times twenty to be at the courthouse banging on them doors and telling them that we, they need to take care of their responsibility. Uh, it ain't, it's not ours and I can't put it, like, this is me and I'm trying to make it known, y'all decide, we'll hold on in a minute. It ain't, the citizens have already paid for EMS services when they pay their county taxes. And the citizens deserve EMS, adequate EMS service. And for whatever reason, this is my opinion and I can prove it up, prove it with facts, they are not getting it right now. Um, and they're getting it because West Tennessee Healthcare is here. And until somebody can show me that's the county EMS or the county commissioners, that they can show me how they plan to make up the need that the lack of what they're going to have when they, uh, leave, I'm still saying the same thing. Get rid of the county EMS, give it to West Tennessee Healthcare and let them fix the problem. Um, they're a lot more equipped than what we are, I hate to lose our county EMS, but at the same time, like you said, the value of a life, to hold on to something that's already done fell apart, uh, let's just be so.
Mr. Kevin, so if, if this is, if this proposal is voted down tonight, how long are y'all going to stay in good faith, um, is that until the next county commission meeting?
So, that, that will be something I will need to, to go up above me on, uh, but, I mean, we're not pulling out tonight.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Our, our goal has never to been, you know, to put, to believe, none of us want to be here asking for money, I can tell you that. You know, that's, we're, we're the last people that want to be up here doing that. Um, we're just in a con- you know, a situation now where it has to be financially viable, you know, and until federal and state reimbursement models change, until insurance starts covering the cost of the service we provide, that's going to be harder to do. Um, and so, I will have to get back with, uh, with the mayor on that if, if the decision is unfavorable tonight that, um, what, what we're able to do, that's, that's something I will, I don't have the authority to, to say now.
Anything else, anybody? Again, thank you so much, Kevin, West Tennessee Healthcare, I really appreciate you. All right, we got a decision to make, if there's a motion that we take this subsidy request of four hundred and six thousand, uh, to keep the, uh, to pay West Tennessee Healthcare or Medical Center EMS, uh, for ambulance in the city of Bolivar. Is there a motion to that effect? All right, uh, so lack of a motion, so we will not Alright, uh, so lack of a motion, so we will not take this request up and then I will wait to hear back from Kevin on our next move. But let me say this again, to y'all, the eight council people up here and to everybody that's listening to me, call your county commissioners, call your county mayor, and let them know that they deserve, y'all, they're citizens, we deserve to know how EMS is gonna be taken care of in, in the community. And whether that's beefing up the county EMS, or that's writing a check to West Tennessee Healthcare, we need to figure it out and we need to figure it out soon. And that's, you know, that's, that's, that's what we got on. Alright. Community to devel- Community to Development and comment, public comment section, if any, that one, uh, Ms. Carrie McGowan, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor McTisick and, oh, councilmen, councilmen and women. My name is Carrie McGowan and I own property at five twenty-five Fisher Street. I am here tonight to present to the city council a petition from property owners on Fisher, Union, Keller, Tate, Butler and Neely Streets, to name a few. This petition is to bring attention to an issue regarding the amount of storm water that runs through an uncovered drain in our neighborhood. This drain is covered until it reaches the intersection of Butler and Jones, at which point the drain is uncovered and the water flows through our east side neighborhoods, causing property erosion and carrying trash and debris, which carries, travels through our backyards. Another issue is the aggressive cutzoo growing in the area. Each year, the cutzoo becomes more and more invasive. The open drain, along with the cutzoo, results in a breeding fest for mosquitoes thighs that carry harmful disease which can lead to health risks. And it's also a habitat for groundhogs, raccoons and other animals living there. I was told that the cutzoo was planted by the city years ago to prevent the erosion. However, that has not been the case. Consequently, it has attached itself to property owners' trees, fences or whatever else it encounters. On behalf of the above-mentioned neighborhoods, we are asking that this issue be addressed. We, the property owners, request a portion of the two point five five million infrastructure grant recently awarded to the city of Bolivar by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation be used to remedy this increasing problem or write a separate grant to correct this issue, as has been done for other projects in the city. We are asking the mayor and the city councilmen and women to visit these areas in person and see what is happening to our land. We are hopeful that you will view this matter with the same urgency as the property, property owners and take corrective action. Thank you for your time and I have a video that I want to show.
Come on, come on. Push that TV on, y'all see that?
Yeah, you need to turn one of them, at least one of them.
This is the water that runs through the backyards. And you see how it would erode our property? That's a lot of water. And it's, like I said, it's covered until it gets to Jones and Butler and then it just stops. He's gonna show you the cutzoo that's, it grow- now, that was like in the fall, so there wasn't any cutzoo, but this is cutzoo that grows in that same ditch. And there's a fence that is completely covered by the cutzoo. You can't even see the fence that's, when he goes back. Beside this house is a fence and it's nothing but cutzoo. And it's just, it's unsightly and like I said, it, it's just causing problems to the neighborhood. So, do you have any questions?
No, I can say to the, so with the infrastructure ma- money, that has to be spent on sewer, so that already has went through that process. There is some grants that we can apply for, we've, um, right down the street on the other side where, uh, Rusty McClellan live.
Yes.
He deals with the ditch right there. We, when, when that opens back up, we can apply to try to see if we can get some money from DRA and some of the storm water to do that. For is that part on that backside, I, I've been out there multiple times, went out, this was a couple of years back. Uh, the lady that lives, it's right on the corner there, 'cause, I mean, the ditch is like right here and the house is like.
Yeah, that's, of Ms. um, Dorita Allen.
Yes, uh, uh, it's literally falling over the thing. And I can't speak to, if they planted cutzoo and I, I don't, I don't know, um, about that process. But we, we can't go, that's private property, our rideaway is not right there. I, so whoever developed it, put that in there like that, it's not a city drain right away through there. It catches that storm water. But the grant that we can apply for, I don't know when it's open, I'll check, I could get, care about, so we'll check tomorrow and leave your contact number and I can let the council members know, we can, we don't, 'cause Rusty, I'm, we're gonna do the same thing for his ditch over there.
Are you saying that grant money could do what?
To cover that drain and do, fit, do erosion control. Um, I, now, you're talking about a ton of money, uh, I don't, it would, something like that cost. With, yeah, uh, and I, I don't know why it's not, yeah, I don't know why it's not covered, uh. I don't, I can't, like I said, I can't speak to that. But we can, now, we physically, I mean, we, I argued up and down with a couple of other people about their storm drain and like, we got the engineers to come in, we're responsible for it right there when it gets to the road legally. But on the other part, when it goes in the back, the backyards, that's on the property owner. Uh, but I'll, I will find out when that grant period open and I don't.
So you're saying that you can't do anything with the water that's going behind the houses?
No, legally, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, that was, I, that's the development part, it's, it's not just y'all's, it's every, once it's in the backyard. Only thing we're responsible for is the rideaway right off the, the main hot, the main road. I think it's ten, is it ten feet from the center line or, whatever what rideaway about is different.
Right.
Uh, but that back in the back, that's on the, the property owner.
Okay, but what about some of the grants that you did to do in some of the neighborhoods, other neighborhoods where you did the, the drainage?
The one I'm talking about now is the one, I know of one, and that was over on Mellowbrook.
Yes.
Um, and that's still a mess to this day, but all on Mellowbrook and that was through, uh, through this DRA. And so that's what I'm saying, we can apply, but we didn't, the city, we didn't pay, that was a grant that we applied for to do that on private property.
But there was a grant that was done for the country club for you all did, there was a pond and you all did.
Yeah, that's the one, that's the one I'm talking about, yes, ma'am.
So how was that done and it's in, oh, it's on private property?
Because that grant allows us to do that, 'cause it's the federal money that pays for it. So that grant allows for that to be applied for on behalf of the property owner.
So it could, okay, so it could actually be applied to my property?
Yes, ma'am, uh-huh, yes, ma'am. I'm just saying the grant that you mentioned could not be, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So that was, what year was that, two thousand fourteen? Y'all remember when that year, what year that was when we did that? I, I wasn't married, it was before, I think I had just got on the council.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Oh, yeah, I forgot about the one on Jones Street, uh, well, where Mr. Hicks was this right? 'Cause I think they stopped right before they got to his property.
Okay.
And they, and that company made a mess of that, they had to come back and get it fixed. But it'll be that same concept.
Got you, okay. Well, thank you all.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I didn't get a chance to sign up to, uh, to speak, but I wanna ask the council, since y'all talked about everything except the crime in Bolivar, East Bolivar, to be specific. And Kevin, I have a question for you. Who, when were you all denied service for citizens? Because on July the third, there was a call on Johnson Street and I recorded, the EMS worker said she was told, they were told not to go on Johnson Street. Not to go there. So we sit up here like a knot on the law, but we got issues in this city that's gonna be addressed. So I, I wanna hear you all say, especially the east side representative. I didn't see any of you all out, none of you. And I'm disappointed that you all represent East Bolivar, all of you, except for you Caroline, 'cause you just came. So you're exempt.
Anybody wanna address Ms. Woods, I don't have anything to talk to.
I know you don't.
Alright, uh, anything else? Is there a motion, uh, go ahead, come on, Ms. Fisher.
Kevin, did you, did you not name her?
Hi. When my daughter was shot, when my daughter was shot in the city of Bolivar and I called nine one one for help. I called. No one came. One of my neighbors came by when I was standing by my daughter's body dying in the car screaming. She came through and she said, do you need some help? About twenty minutes had passed. She went. Maybe ten minutes later, fifteen minutes later, police came and then paramedics came. And after they had taken my daughter's body out of the car and put her on the stretch and was putting her, taking her to the ambulance, nine one one called me. And I'm, this, I'm saying this because it, it, the EMTs, the violence, they told, she told me on the phone, and this is how she said it. We've been getting some crank calls from this number. Do you have an emergency? And I told her, I don't need you, now she's dead. And hung the phone up. That was the day my daughter died. We have a serious issue here in the city with our nine one one calls and with the lack of medical, uh, I guess, emergency medical help for our EMTs. 'Cause if my husband had not drove me from Grand Junction to Bolivar, I would've died because I was pregnant in my fallopian tubes. We called for help. My husband waited at the house, no one came. So he put me in the car, drove me to Hickory Valley, we stopped at the phone booth that was in Hickory Valley at the time. Called to find out where the EMTs were. We waited, no one came. We didn't see the EMT until he got me to Bolivar at the intersection of the red light to turn onto Market Street. That's when they was turning up to come on eighteen. And if he had not taken me to the hospital in the car, I would've died. I would've bled to death and died. I was four weeks pregnant in my fallopian tube and didn't know it. And I would've died. If we do not get better medical care for our people, I live on Pleasant, Preg Lane, right in town. And it was thirty minutes before we got help for my daughter who had been shot over ten times. Right there, by Bull Market. If we don't get some help, if we don't, something don't get done, people will die. Right here in the city. Forget about the county going out to Hickory Valley, Grand Junction, Salisbury, Pocahontas, Middleton. Right here in the city, people will die. Because what are we gonna do with two ambulances? When you having three people shot in one night? When you having people dying of heart attacks, strokes, right here in the city? And they're dying. Elections are for putting people in and out of office. If our county commissioners and our mayor is not concerned about the welfare of the people that vote him in and vote them in, then we need to vote them out. And vote people in who care about the people of this county. Because people are gonna die. And like Mr. Reverend Wood said, what is the price of a life? I don't have my daughter today. If, maybe if they had called the police and called an ambulance, 'cause nine one one didn't call nobody. Somebody else called, police solved the commotion, but nine one one did not call for help for my dying daughter. They did not call the police and they did not call the paramedics. So, that being the case, we need to do something because the county has the money because they raised our taxes. So if they're not gonna do it, then we need to vote them out and put somebody in that's gonna do it. Because we can't afford to let people die simply because somebody decided it's not my problem. Because it ain't my daughter that's dying. It's not my daughter that got shot, it's not my son that's having a stroke, it's not my father that's having a heart attack. We need to do something about it. And as the people of Hardeman County, 'cause I'm a voter, I'll vote every election, I don't care if they voting for trash pickup. If we don't vote, if our voices are not heard, we, if they don't not heard in these meetings, county meetings, city meetings, then they'll be heard at the voting box. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Brenda, Ms. Brenda, will you come back up for a minute, please? So I'm gonna address, um, the issue with the EMS, you know, I'm for transparency and communication and I wanna explain to you, just from my standpoint, you know, I'm in law enforcement, me and, uh, Reverend Woods both are. So I want to explain to everyone what the procedures are whenever you're calling for, uh, for ambulance, whenever there's a certain situation going on, whether it be a shooting, disturbance or something like that, right? So EMS, whenever they're dispatched, if the scene is not secured, whenever I say secured, it means everyone's calm on the scene, uh, they're, they're not shooting, it's not a hundred people on the scene gathering around. They're gonna stage at a nearby location until the officers make the scene and say, it's all clear. So the officers ha- have to make the scene, see what's going on, because it may not be safe for them to come there yet. Because EMS drivers, paramedics, EMTs, they don't wear bulletproof vests like me and Ms. Woods do. They don't have guns, they don't have pepper spray, they don't have a flashlight, they're there to provide medical care. And so, I wasn't there during this incident, I saw videos, I've heard about it, we got phone calls, I think we all have. But I think that's, that's the situation that, that took place. I don't think that they didn't wanna come, I think that, you, I saw the video, it looked like there was over a hundred, maybe two hundred people on that scene. Um, and it was very chaotic. So without me being there, I just wanted to just be transparent with you
Okay.
and just explain, uh, that, that it may not be an issue where they didn't wanna come, but the, but the scene wasn't unraveling, it was not safe for them to show up yet. And, um, I, I thi- I think that's what the situation here is. I don't think it was a lack of them wanting to respond, I just don't think it was safe at, at that time.
At least you responded to my question and I appreciate that.
I just think that.
Because it makes sense.
Yeah.
You made it make sense. You really did. Because, but when I went on the scene, it wasn't chaotic.
Right.
So, but they didn't know it because there was no police officers at, at that time, there was no police officers there, so. But I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I just thought they were refusing to go to the scene.
So, to, to my understanding, it wasn't that, that type of situation, it was merely, it was a, the video that I saw, it looked like there was about a hundred, hundred fifty people, um, Bolivar Police was on the scene, Sheriff's Department's on the scene, Waffle PD was on the scene, uh, it was just very chaotic. Uh, people were fighting, uh, they were shooting fireworks at officers and we're not talking about bottle rockets, we're talking about cannons that are the size of this bottle that go up three hundred feet and blast.
Correct.
Um, so I think it was just a very chaotic, unsafe scene. I, I, I think that's what it was, I'm sorry for any miscommunication that there may have been, but I think this situation was just that, it was just unsafe at the time.
I really do appreciate that, because I was thinking about the liability issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, for, you know, just saying that we can't go, uh, on the street and I, I, I'm wondering, hey.
That's absurd, no, no. It's just one of those situations, if it's not safe, uh, like I said, they don't have the equipment that, uh, that Chief Jones officers have that, um, that protect them, so it's, it's just a safety standpoint.
Well, I understand that, but my point, what I'm bringing to you all is, they have cameras that they say- But my point, what I'm bringing to you all is, they have cameras that they say they're watching. But no, I, I never hear of any crimes being solved. And are they, Ray Charles Vision cameras? What's wrong? Something is wrong when you can't make any arrests.
Yes, ma'am.
Something is wrong. I got a problem with that. And that's, that, I mean, those are some, it's, it's just like, um, uh, Ms. Fitche was just talking about. These are some, we got some problems here. Uh, and you can't cover, put a Band-Aid on this and act like it's not, nothing is going on. People are dying, and nobody's saying anything. It's very frustrating. It's very frustrating.
I just wanted to just address.
But I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Brenda, also, let me also say, this, uh, we, many times, we don't know what's going on. We don't know, I don't know what time it happened. Uh, never got a phone call.
Okay.
Next morning, when I got up, then my son come in and said, "Daddy, have you seen the videos? A couple of guys died." I said, "Died where?" Said that on Johnson Street. So he showed me some things on video, and at that time, I start calling some of the other council members and told the council, "We got to try to do something about this." If we hadn't known that night that was going on, I would have been there. I would have been out there by not knowing, you know, if you don't know, you don't know.
Yeah, you told me, called me.
Yeah, I'll call you, and I'll call Larry, and, uh, thank a couple more, but.
Well, I think the people don't even know who they're representing, so, 'cause I get called all the time. That, I think that's the problem.
Right.
Maybe you all should get in the community and have some community meetings and let people know who you are.
Right.
Because I'm tired of getting the calls.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be honest.
Right.
I get the calls at twenty-two o'clock in the morning.
You remember, there on M Street, we had the shooting on M Street there. And I believe it's M Street and around Thomas Cove. After I got there and found out, I was there. Matter of fact, then I called, uh, Larry. Me and Larry both was there. We talked to some of the people. Some of the people still was upset, but we done what we could to calm them down in order for the officers to do their job. Uh, like I said, if, if they need us, all the thing, we'll put our name in the paper, whatever we need to do.
Y'all need to have some community meetings. You need to have to open this building up, have some community meetings, and let the people know who you are.
Right.
And let them know they can call y'all, 'cause I can say, "I'm tired of them calling me. I'm gonna change my telephone."
Brenda, I think we do have to, we, we know we have some issues with violence, and a lot of the problem, I think, has to do with the fact that we have nothing for our youth here.
That's true.
We have been saying for years and years and years, we've gotta do something to help our youth. We now have a tourism and community development situation. And I, it seems like all the focus is on tourism. The community development part is what we need to be working on. Because, like I said, it's one thing to make Bolivar a nice place to, for people to come and visit. We need to make it a nice place for folks to live.
That's true.
Get that together first.
Mm-hmm.
In, in my mind.
Right.
I, I don't want to get on this, but all this, we spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on Christmas and all of that.
Mm-hmm.
And our kids don't have anything going on, and we got gangs and, and crimes and killers. To me, our priorities are just a little bit skewed.
Right.
And I'm gonna try to do whatever I can to try to redirect a little bit of that focus and a little of that funding towards some issues that we have, particularly on the east side.
But I, I really do appreciate that, because, like I said, people call me, come to me, because they know I listen. And there are gang members that wants to stop this, but you all not gonna stop it, 'cause you're sitting in your accoutrement's conference, and you're afraid. You can't be afraid and not do something about these issues. I mean, you got to look at them straight up and say, "Hey, this guy, this madness have to stop. Somebody gotta do it. Somebody gotta do it." And, and you all, oh, it's, it's like, um, Ms. Fitche was saying, you all elected. You just didn't walk in these offices, act like it. Because as sure as you was wa- walked in it, you can be walked out, 'cause I'm getting ready to check the whole.
And, and last thing, Ms. Brenda, is, is this. Many of them may not know, the day that Reverend Fitche's daughter got murdered, uh, matter of fact, we just went into work there at the county. And we got a phone call of the subject that, the suspect that done that.
Correct.
And matter of fact, uh, I was one of the officers, along with some more county officers, um, that was involved in that, so, uh, I want to thank, I'm so sorry what happened, but we done our job.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, come on. Come down.
Yeah, yeah, come down.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes. Right.
Of course, we have all these problems we have in Bolivar, and I just want to kind of say something to our citizens. It is not the government's duty to govern our children. You go to different areas and go to golf course, some other areas, they're not shooting that up. They're not shooting up a lot of different places. There's a certain designated area in Bolivar where they shooting up things. These are our kids. So we asking them to govern our children. My father told me once, "So you're saying, well, we need to do something for our kids." They don't even have to do anything for your children. They provide a lot of free services for our kids. Do something for your own kid. You raise your kid, you know where your kid should be.
My kids.
Now, I'm not talking about you.
Okay.
I'm talking to you and everybody else. I'm not talking about you, specifically, your kids are grown.
Well, you looking at me, okay.
Yeah, but you, I know you, but you're relatives. We're relatives, you just got up, so I'm gonna get up and talk to everybody, okay? You have grown kids. So we talking about gangs, okay? There are other activities that are free for our kids to be involved in, but we don't take them. 'Cause municipal center here is open, we don't bring them. There are other things, when you say, "Well, you need to do something," well, we need to do something for the kids. Do something for your own kids. We have churches, we have nonprofits, we have a lot of things that we can do, but we complain about everything. I got kids.
If they go to the golf course, they gonna stop this, you know, okay?
I'm not gonna, hmm?
Okay?
Maybe so.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not saying this, but we keep saying, "They need to take care of our black kids." Carrie Stack told me this one time, before he retired. His kid, I raise my kids, and I have to feed my kids, put my kids in activities, and I have to watch out for my kids. I don't have to try to watch out for everybody else's kids. So why would watch out for our own kids? We have all these churches, N W C P, all these other organizations that sit back and want everybody else to take care of our kids.
We just want our part of it. We just want to make sure that we get our part of it.
Well, I let y'all guys talk, just let me, let me have mine. Just, you, take care of our own kids. We get together in our own community, and we can have a conversation about our own kids. We can police our own kids, we can watch out and see, I believe the snitching.
You gonna get it.
If, if I see your kid shoot at somebody, I'm gonna tell you. I'm just gonna tell you point-blank. If you shoot at my kid, I'm gonna tell who I saw. So it ain't cool, we think it's cool in the hood not to snitch, not to tell. So until somebody get killed, now you wanna, okay, now it's my kid. I'm just saying, that's not making a government problem. We can get together, and let's talk. We can get together, and let's talk about our black kids shooting up the neighborhood, and stop making it about them.
It's all about our problem.
It's all our problem. I get that, I'm saying that, I'm saying this. If we want to get together, meet at somebody's church, talk about our black children shooting up each other, let's go do that. But trying to sit down and make it, okay, I got, we got baseball game, we got softball, we got basketball, all kinds of activities. But we let them go do whatever they want to do. We letting the kids run us. We got children that's running the parents.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, it's ridiculous how our children behave. I know we had little kids, maybe a week ago, eight-year-old kid cursed me out on the square. On the square.
I would still be trying to get my mom to say. I would still be trying to get my mom to say.
But I did, well, I found out whose mother was, and I called his mother. Whose mother said, "Come and get him." He need a male figure, send some time with him. So we get up there, we have all these conversations about all these bad stuff that's happening, we pointing fingers. The only finger we can point at is our little black kids. They shooting up everybody else, they shooting each other. They not going to golf course, shooting golf course, they shoot each other. So let's, 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 let's just, let's do it, that's it.
All right, hold on. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, move.
Motion by Mr. McKenna is a second.
Second by Mr. Williams, all my favor say, ah.
And oppose us. We got two more means after this.